And Marlene from the township joining us on Jeff's proposal for EMS increasing the pay rates but staying within hopefully the 2021 budget that we did earlier in the year. And then also Jeff's proposal to add a paramedic full-time position, which I think is being suggested for next year. So I know Jeff sent out some notes ahead of today. And then Jonathan also put together a chart to put side by side what the original request was and what the revised request would be. And Jonathan did that based on straight time, you know, not overtime and all those sort of factors involved, correct?
Yep.
So that you could get a good glance at that as well. First, with regard to the notes that Jeff took, does anyone have any questions for Jeff to start off with? I know I've sent a couple to Jeff and I thought we can, maybe we break this down and distill it by holiday time was one of the topics. Does anyone here have any issue with paying the holiday time rate for 2021? I think we discussed this at the council meeting and it didn't seem like there was any disagreement on that. Does anyone want to start that, I mean Karen, what if we did that effective for the Christmas holiday and New Year's holiday? Would that be too difficult to incorporate into this year? If it's not already in the salary ordinance or could we do that effective immediately?
Yeah, so I definitely checked, I'm super in fact had a webinar today. And I did ask if that policy needed to be in our salary ordinance or personal policy manual. They said put it in your salary ordinance and then reference personal policy manual. Or put it in the policy manual, reference it in the salary ordinance. So what we probably could do is we could pass it as a policy effective next Tuesday. That would go into effect at the Christmas, Christmas Eve, Christmas. And then what was it, you had five holidays. I know Thanksgiving day after Christmas Eve, Christmas, was it New Year's that you were thinking? Okay, that's what I assumed and I didn't want to assume.
So we'd be able to make it retroactive to Thanksgiving?
No, but you could, I mean, you could, but it's gonna... Can we just do it?
From Christmas forward?
Christmas Eve, you know, effective next Tuesday will take care of Christmas Eve going forward.
Got it.
It would just be a lot easier.
Got it.
I'm sorry, I'm not trying to be scripted this time.
No, that totally makes sense.
I think we went backwards also. I mean, the impact of having time and a half versus the only time is already, that works out already on the standard. I mean, with overtime, it's already been calculated. There's no savings to go back for, so it's potential savings.
If I would, I wouldn't mind if I was, I'm starting it at the first of the year. It doesn't really have to be, I appreciate the offer, but I was looking at being it starting for Christmas 21.
Okay. I think it's only fair to do Christmas on if, if we're gonna do it. It just seems like it's kind of cruel that we do it for other employees, but not for the EMS, which I didn't realize was the case.
Well, I don't think we do it for the employees either. We haven't.
Oh, I thought it's like Bob comes in Christmas Day, doesn't he get time and a half?
I think if they're called in, then they would get time and a half. Or they would get double time, but I don't, and that has disappeared too. I think we had that a couple of years ago and then it's, I looked in the ordinance, or not the ordinance, the personal policy manual. And it's not in there now, so I don't know if when we did it and got changed.
Because I thought we fixed it where if they did get time and a half if they came in on a holiday. Cause that was a big, I remember that conversation, do you remember that Sally?
Maybe.
Cause I think there was disagreement on the council about it at the time too, if I recall. I don't know what came of it though, to be honest Karen. I'm sorry.
Well, I think if it's simply the news, go along with what Jeff presented, we started starting in 2021. Rather than doing some official updates. So I'm, I'm in favor of just stating moving forward to 2021.
What you would need would be a motion to amend or modify the employee handbook on the salary.
What we'll do is, yeah, we'll need to amend the employee handbook, personal policy manual. And then we'll make a reference in the salary ordinance to the effect that if you're, if you're working part-time or full-time on a holiday, if that's your schedule, then, or if you take that shift, then you'll be paid time and a half. So I did send out a holiday policy yesterday that, I don't know if you all read, but two people caught a typo, so. But it basically stated that part-time or full-time emergency services, at least in the EMS, employees working the following days will be paid at a rate of time and a half for the hours worked on the holidays as follows. New Year's Day, Thanksgiving, day after Thanksgiving, Christmas Eve and Christmas. And then I put, for example, because I had the question, so is it the shift, is it the hours? So I added, for example, if working the 6:00 PM, December 23rd to 6:00 AM, December 24th shift, the employee would be paid straight time for 6:00 PM to midnight and then time and a half for midnight to 6:00 AM. And then this, they pay time and a half for that 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM. And then time and a half for 6:00 PM to midnight and then regular time for the next day. I also added utilities department employees required to run the water sewer plants on these five holidays will be paid time and a half. And employees called in for an emergency on these days will be paid double time. So that would be like snow plowing or a water leak or, you know, something like that. Or something happen, you know, we had a catastrophic, you know, huge emergency that other emergency services personnel needed to become, needed to come in. That would cover those people who are planning to be here.
Is there a reason it's only the winter holidays and not like Labor Day, Fourth of July? I'm assuming those holidays are tough to cover, whether it's a police officer or EMT or...
Those days are always tough to cover, but the toughest ones are those five ones that are just, they're the, just, to say it simply, it's, those are the ones that are more family oriented than some of the other ones there. So typically those are the harder ones to get people to work. And, you know, the holidays in general aren't divided up, but this just adds another layer of sharing the load, I could say.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, I know like my sister's a nurse and I asked her, they get time and a half on any of the holidays. They get like 11 holidays of the year or something because they have to, and then they, they rotate it among their staff. So she's not working Christmas this year, she is next year. But they still get time and a half if they're on that rotation. And it doesn't matter if it's Labor Day, Fourth of July, Christmas, et cetera. So that's, I'm just putting that question out there because I've never heard of like, writing out that policy for these five holidays, but not these six holidays or whatever.
We did that with Karen because we could get people to work part-time for, you know, Columbus Day and Maroonie King Day and Labor Day, Memorial Day. It was like pulling teeth to get them to do Thanksgiving and Christmas, New Years. And we did that for the part-time and, you know. Too much time stepped up because they were getting us an extra pay. And we do it then.
I believe all of you, I just want to be fair, you know. To me, a holiday is a holiday. I look forward to them as an employee myself. So I'd be a little miffed if I had to work Labor Day when my friends and family are all coming to town for a long weekend or picnic, you know, or whatever.
But some of those days generally is, those are just becoming days now. Like what Sally was saying, you know, we have 13 holidays here. I don't know if that's the same number for next year, I haven't looked at that. But, you know, that, that would be like seven of those days are just, just normal days. Like whether it's Veterans Day, whether that's an important day for some people. You know, for majority of other people, it's just another day. And the same can go for a variety of other days, from Washington's birthday to President's Day. There's just, they are, they are federal holidays and some state holidays, but most other businesses are closed.
My company gives eight days and I'd be miffed if I had to work any one of the eight. And I would expect more pay for it because I'm supposed to get it off, I guess is what I'm getting at. We give it as a holiday, why aren't we giving it as a holiday? If you end up having to work it, I think you should get paid more. Because, so Bob's crew and them, they don't have to work it unless there's an emergency and then they get double time. But we're asking police, EMS, et cetera, to work those other ones. Because there's just an assumption there could be an emergency. So I don't see how we treat one group of employees one way and one another way, it doesn't make sense to me. But everyone else seems okay with that.
If they're a full-time person right now, like if Jeff has to work Christmas or Wayne, they would get another day they could flip for that within 30 days generally, right, is what we have?
That's not in there either.
Okay, well, that's, that's how it's been done in the past is that they've...
Taken a separate day.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, because part-time employees typically don't get paid.
And part-time employees don't like that.
Right, and I'm totally okay with that, with the exception of these five, which I think it's fair to, you know, to try to get some part-timers to work it. What I'm saying is if you're a full-time employee and you work the holiday, you should be paid time and a half.
Well, in effect, you are getting an additional day off, you're getting paid time and a half. And you're getting an additional day off because as a full-time employee, you are getting a holiday. Compared, I wouldn't call PTO or whatever, for a holiday. With Jonathan or Karen have eight, eight holidays a year. You know, if, if they were in this situation, or Jeff would be the example, I mean, he gets the same number of paid holidays a year. If he works on these holidays, he's gonna get paid it, but he's gonna get an additional day off somewhere.
If he finds one.
Or he gets, or he would be paid it for it.
I'm just saying time and a half, no matter what. I don't care what employee it is.
And I'm not trying to... So also emergency services get paid 12 hours for a holiday vacation, whereas everybody else gets paid eight.
Eight.
Because it's the leadership's fault, so.
That makes sense, it's other...
They're not all, you know.
I just like consistency, that's all I'm saying. I don't care if the four of you want it the other way, that's how it's gonna be. I'm just pointing out my point of view. To me, if I'm the employee, that would not sit well with me. You know? And I don't know, do the cross departments, do they care? Like the police get paid time and a half for working Labor Day. An EMS gets paid time and a half for working Labor Day, let's say, which at this point, you're not suggesting that. You're just suggesting five holidays. But if Bob has to come in Labor Day, he gets double time pay. I don't get it.
Scheduled in advance, so I mean, it's an addition to the rule, I think we could call in. And then take the, the being called in down to time and a half.
It doesn't matter, I'm just putting it out there as, it's inconsistent.
Well, I think, I mean, giving them that day off, while it's not on the day, I mean, at least that's a compensation to try and make it a good one. I mean, they are different departments with different responsibilities and, you know, office coverage isn't required 24/7 for a self-care or building department versus emergency services.
So is that a choice? Like if Wayne has to work Christmas, you get to take a different day for Christmas? Do you currently know that's a choice?
What we've done, we've always, Christmas falls on your day of work, Tom. That's how it is if you miss my work. Rich, but if don't, you're willing to work it. But the next year, the year after, it's on your day off. We just take it to day per day somewhere else.
If it happens to fall on their day, do they get time and a half for it or just regular pay? It's regular pay?
We take the day off somewhere else.
So they still get the same total number of holidays, they just might not fall on the days that everyone wants, right?
You don't fall on it, and you're not, two years, they won't fall.
Okay, if we want a different solution for each department, that's fine.
I mean, I'm not opposed if you, I mean, if you want a paid holiday, but we understand what we're all we can do. But if you turn around and you pay the guy for that day, and say you can have a day off somewhere else. How can you do that?
Yeah, I would still be agreeable to you can take a different day.
Just to add on to Wayne's, is what's different also with EMS compared to other departments, like other departments don't work 24 hours where at least five or at least the EMS here do, is that we don't, we don't have like a shift where, where Wayne can have, you work Monday, Monday, Wednesday this week and Saturday this week, you work those three days a week this week and the next week you work Tuesday, Thursday or some, they have some scenario worked out correctly.
Well, that's where you got to find that year.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have like your traditional, I'm on A shift, B shift and C shift. So, you know, I work one day, I'm off two days and then I work a third day. That's a typical 24-hour shift kind of pattern. Or you go 24 on, 24 off, 24 on, 24 off. And so then you go that and then you have four days off. Those are two of the typical scenarios for EMS and fire. And so as the year goes along, there are holidays you never touch and you never miss. Or then there's holidays that you do miss. You may not have Thanksgiving this year, you may not have it next year, but you may have it the third year. Or this shift could have, you know, could get Thanksgiving over a 10-year period of time, 60% of the time or six times out of the 10, just because it's that shift. But the other two shifts don't because of how it falls every third day. So that's, that's, that's where the difference is, is every department is different, just like you were alluding to with pay. You know, when you have someone that normally doesn't have to come in and now has to come in, it's a different scenario for each different department. And that's why it's so unique for every department.
Okay. So the, the policy would simply be to add to our policy handbook that those five holidays EMS are fired, right?
EMS, please.
Yeah, EMS are pleased, that was a typo.
Okay, okay. Are you? Okay, so...
Are we doing part-time, I have part-time or full-time. Emergency services, police and EMS employees working the following days would be paid at a rate of time and a half for the hours worked that holiday. So be part-time and full-time.
Yeah, cause it would then incentivize the part-timers to do it.
So if you're scheduled for that, those five days. In that 24-hour period.
Yeah.
So if it's an overnight shift, you get six hours straight time, six hours.
Yeah. That's only fair because of where the hours fall.
I'm willing to make that motion.
We can't, tonight.
Hold this forward?
Yes.
Sorry.
Not a special session.
No, no.
But we can do it Tuesday, at least working overtime out here instead of driving on a public meeting forever. Okay.
And that was, I wanted to get this right.
Yeah.
Before it went into the salary ordinance and personal policy manual. Now, are you okay with utility department employees as well? You have employees that have to come in or run this, run the sewer department. And they do four-hour shifts, like, you know, because they have to be there seven days a week to run tests. So on Saturday and Sunday, and they, the guys switch off, so they keep their hours to 40 hours, but they still have to come in on those holidays, but they limit it to four hours.
I would be okay with that, are you guys okay with that?
Mm-hmm, yeah. Yeah, I agree.
I just want to make sure that...
So add them to it, that would make me a lot more comfortable than I was 10 minutes ago.
Well, that was included, so, and then the employees called in for an emergency. So that's at double time, is that acceptable or do you want it time and a half or?
Are there any other departments besides water and sewer that might get called in?
And this, well, utilities.
Besides utilities, but I mean, with Wayne, with Wayne calling, but then should be created that same other number.
No, a holiday?
No.
Anytime.
Say you want a half.
They'd probably be in overtime anyway, Rich, if they got called in.
In terms of, we talked about exiting, they weren't scheduled, they're called in, they're willing to come in on an emergency basis and the utility department will be paid double time for it. If we call anybody in on an emergency basis like that, should they also get double time? Time and a half.
I mean, I would see it like if, if there was a huge fire and we needed extra EMTs and we needed extra police officers to come in and direct...
Like the time Bob had to watch the water towers at 8 o'clock at night or 9 o'clock at night.
Yeah, but I mean, like, I mean, cause he, he's aren't taking care of it. I was just trying to explain like for the police and EMS to have them too, that those would be paid in addition to. You know, they would be paid at a higher rate.
Yeah, I think, I see a care of saying that it's like an emergency versus if there's a call in, there's a shift law covered. And it's really two different things.
And utility if we say if they're calling because of emergency. It's being double time. Here to, you know, a huge fire, they need to call in, you would have called in people.
Well, snow plowing is one of those things, right?
Yeah, that would be one.
Where they have to come in and plow till midnight.
I know, but my question is for other departments, getting back to what we were talking about, it's early before, with exiting.
Could that happen?
They're going to be double time on emergency call-in. Could it be for any department that's called in on an emergency basis?
And it doesn't, and the way I've written it, and maybe I just need to move it elsewhere or just say any employee called in.
Yeah.
Couldn't you also change the terminology a little bit to say if like Jonathan, the town manager declares this an emergency, then that would then be the reason why they're paid the double time? You know, so if, if the town manager sees it an emergency that we need to do this, whether it's a snow plow driver that has to get out in the middle of the night or needs to clear roads or Wayne needs to have several officers in for some type of emergency. If the town manager declares it as an emergency.
Well, we have to technically declare an emergency when there's a snow emergency. They, in the past, had me sign a declaration.
There's a large amount, you know, if there's two inches of snow, it's not going to be an emergency.
Yeah, it still has to come in and be done.
So maybe we need to change the...
Is there a reason we don't do it as time and a half, as just overtime? Cause it's just extra time they have to work.
All right, it's me, it's, yeah, maybe it's double time, nobody else.
Okay, then take it back down to time and a half.
Oh, it's time and a half.
So, and then what if it's paid?
And I do think if, it's authorized by the clerk or town manager. Cause you would authorize plowing anything over two inches, that's our policy really.
For sidewalks specifically, but yeah.
Yeah, oh, true.
Solving today when there's less than two.
Yeah.
But they weren't called in.
Like you wouldn't have called them in for this snow, but if it were six inches out there, you might call them in. Right?
But that, like I said, we don't, usually Bob is pretty good about keeping an eye on the weather reports. And I mean, they'll send them home early a day and have them plan to come back at a certain time or whatever.
Forty hours regardless.
So they typically get overtime for it, right, but not...
They do, but on a normal day, I mean, this is specifically for these five holidays is what I'm trying to do with that. If they're, you know, if they're like, if they came in early and they plowed and, you know, maybe they left a little bit earlier and they'll get time and a half because they worked overtime. But on these specific five holidays.
Okay, I thought we were talking about holidays, but yes, I get it.
When it's family time and your kids are opening presents, but oh, we have to go plow or there's a fire, I have to go take care of this. Then that's where, you know, I, is it, do we just have time and a half to automatically even? Because you're, they most likely would get paid straight time because there, there's a holiday that week. So.
Yeah.
I need time and a half myself.
At least time and a half, yeah.
Just a little time and a half for anybody that's working that holiday.
Yeah. Whether they have to work it because they had to come in for a specific reason or they worked it because they're just covering a shift that we needed covered. Kind of any reason that you would have to work one of those holidays.
Okay, what if we take that emergency, because then it...
Yes.
Because I, I think we're getting stuck on emergency snow plowing versus, you know, straight up, we need to plow streets.
Yeah. I called Bob one weekend because I watched a car not make it up the hill here on Lakeshore. The snow wasn't that bad, but they, so I just texted him and I'm like, there are people coming back down the hill. So he sent someone and they at least plowed that area and that. So I would want him to get paid appropriately, whoever had to come in and do that.
My eyes are going back and forth because I'm trying to think of how to...
How to word that.
Let me...
They have to come in for any reason on one of those holidays, they will be paid time and a half for the hours that they would work.
I wanted to check out, because it, calling is a key. Cause I don't want somebody to just be like, oh, I'm getting time and a half, I'm just gonna go in and, you know, throw themselves on the sidewalk.
And perhaps that call-in has to be requested by either the town manager, the clerk or the town council. A town council member or town council president, how do you guys want that to look?
What about just the department head?
You could put it on the supervisor and then...
Yes.
Yeah.
Put it on the supervisor and then the supervisor would get you by his side.
Well, you know, I don't think Bob needs to call Jonathan to say, hey, I do. Cause I sent a guy in to go plow the roads, because he's already talked to Wayne or Chad and they said, hey, you need to come plow roads, so.
Yeah, that's totally fine.
Okay, so please call in by their supervisor. On these days would be paid time and a half.
And that supervisor could technically still be Jonathan, because if Bob didn't call him in, I think he needs to be... I mean, you're technically a supervisor too, so, okay. Pay rate increases. Everyone has the chart, what are the thoughts on that? Looks like Jonathan figured out the math. Would be a 22,841 increase. However, I think your logic Jeff was that that increase would be offset by lower overtime?
Here, what, what do you think as far as full-time shifts? Are you doing 36 hours one week and 48 the next? Are you keeping it 36 consistent? Are you doing 48, 48?
48, 48.
Okay.
The downside of doing 12 hours, you're kind of limited, you know, with, you know, what configuration do we can go with.
Okay, that's what, I did some calculations too and I did the 36 and 48, I'd also been 48 and 48, so.
Yeah, I looked, I looked at that as well, I looked at 36 and 36. I looked at a variety of different scenarios to do it. But the savings comes from your, your more higher tiered people that are usually covering the overtime that are up or usually gonna get the overtime. And so with their decrease of hours and what they should work, that's where the, that's where part of the saving is. That's where majority of the savings come from the overtime.
Questions? Marlene, council members on that? Is everyone comfortable with the numbers that Jeff put in here? Is that yes, nots or no, nods?
We have just a question. Is DILTS and WU are DILTS and WU starting in, into part-time or?
What I took was people that have not been here for six months or less would start at the...
At the 14th.
At, at the 14th. And just, just as more is like, just as much as a grandfather, the other ones. And I felt that just someone that walked in the door tomorrow, you know, really shouldn't start at that rate. So those pays would then jump up, not like two months from now or two days from now, you know, but it would be like Jan or June of next year if we pass it forward. That was my goal and that's my thought process.
I need to, DILTS hadn't been doing that many. I, I need to, Dills had been doing that many, I know the, the. I have no question.
Any other questions, comments?
I have a, I have a question, maybe Jeff and Jonathan, the group that's out, but I, I can't see it here. What do you, going forward, you're projecting a twenty-two thousand eight hundred forty-one dollars. So how much of the overtime are we saving?
Just to clarify, Bill, that's more looking backwards than forwards. That's looking at the hours they worked this year. And if we paid them that amount this year, what it would have been, but you know, how that would actually go would depend partially on how those hours are broken up, so.
Yeah.
Um, but it gives you an idea anyway. The overtime question.
What concerns me, those are significant increases. But, you know, where are we going to go the following year?
I'll let Jeff try to answer the other question.
For the day of the following year or?
Well, I mean, we're, we're going up to, just take any one of these things, but, um, here's somebody that's going from, uh, it's going to get fifteen instead of twelve and a half. I don't know, maybe they're part-time, I don't know.
Yeah.
Those are all part-time.
I mean, part-time, maybe they're under six months. I don't know why it's going to well fifty. So my point is, is that I don't see how we can keep going like this with this, these kinds of increments that we're looking at right now.
All right, Bill, I can answer that a little bit, clarify that a little bit, is if you get up to these amounts, and then as you as a physical body decides on a pay raise, it will keep us within line within the budget. So if we do a typical two or three percent increase in the budget, um, these would, would be the same reflected as we increase the salaries. As we, what we do with doing this, if we recruit, recruit, we reduce the amount of overtime on our full-time staff um, by not having to work some of these hours, it decreases our overtime budget and decreases our overtime salaries as well. So doing that, just this year alone, uh, we had over fifty thousand worth, fifty thousand dollars worth of overtime into our salaries. So removing a portion of that in every step of the way brings that down. So the more that we can get the part-time staff to work, the less open spot, the more open spots, it saves us with overtime. And overtime is literally our.
Is there a way to maximize like cap? Cause I see, I'm totally on the page you're on, brought this up with Jeff last week. So, for example, if you find out, um, on average, the full-timers worked ten hours of overtime per pay period. That's just, I'm throwing that out as a number. Is there a way? Cause I know Karen's come down hard on past directors, like you cannot have this much overtime and they just kept doing overtime.
Well, and that was trying to keep them, to keep people in the thirty-six hours.
Yes, yes, cause that was another, especially when the Obamacare stuff kicked in. So, question being though, can you cap, like, could you say to Scott and the other full-timer, you can't work more than X number of overtime hours in a pay period without permission? So they can't just take a shift from someone else and swap to get the overtime. They need to have that signed off on? Like, can we cap the overtime amount?
They're, they are capped right now.
Okay.
The only problem is, is then once we have the open spots, then that's where we have to fill in. Cause currently, right now, open spots are typically filled by the full-timers. Yes, we do have some part-timers that do fill it. But what is hurting us is the open spots and the not, the, 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 less the requirement of hours that are required to work every two months. So we're changing that with, with bringing the rate up. These are the things that are going to allow me to get more part-timers to work more shifts, get more of the, get take the less, take the load off the part-timers, not sit there and say that they don't mind the load. But it, it helps the budget because they are typically, they still will be, you know, the, the higher earner in a sense. But they're going to be, their overtime rate is even much higher. So then we're, we're always paying that premium to where if we can keep the part-timers working it and they're not going to be going into overtime, uh, because those hours are going to be kept under the, the thirty-six hours, that helps us out. But when we are constantly struggling, we have two individuals that have been working, you know, large amounts of overtime in several cases. And we've had several, several employees, we've had two employees that put in upwards of a hundred and eighty hours in two weeks because of scheduling issues, because of open spots, because of.
So these people are not working because it's not worth the money and because they're not required to.
Yes, and then.
If they're only required one shift a month, they may only work one shift a month. But if you say from now on, we're requiring one shift a week or whatever.
Right, and that's where I'm trying to go and trying to look and go into doing FTEs, full-time equivalent hours. So what I would say to any one of these people, I would say, okay, Jen, um, you, you want to work, we have the hours. I have, I know exactly how many hours I have here. I know how many hours I need a week. I know how many FTEs I need. And for anyone that doesn't know FTEs, it's full-time equivalent, that's what we're doing. When you say you're a point one, that means you're forty hours of work week here. So as you break down the points status, you go to a one point two, a point two, a point four, a point six, it's a fraction of that forty hours. So as we, so as I schedule this out, and so as we work this out with, with the staff, is that I say to you, okay, you're willing to work X amount of time. What I'm willing to do as your employer, as your scheduler, I'm going to make sure that I give you that amount of time. So if you say, Jeff, I can work twelve, twenty-four hours a week. So I say to you, okay, we're going to work around your full-time, your other full-time job because you're part-time. We'll have some limited exceptions to that, but you're going to have to, in essence, if you can't make up, like say you give me availability and says I can work this day, but I, I can't work any other. But you have said, I, I can do twenty-fourth. You're going to have another twelve-hour shift on another day that doesn't conflict with your normal working schedule that we know you have, but you're going to have to commit to that so we can maintain a fiscal control of the, of the, of the salaries. But when we don't have any of that, and I can't guarantee you any amount, I can't guarantee you a certain amount of hours, that's where, that's where we run into hiccups, that's where we run into problems. We don't have enough people to run shifts. So where other departments, it's easy for them. So when they have certain shifts or they have certain people, they have that. They do not have that. I have a mixture of, like I said to you in the, in the information I gave you, is that we are, we are run by one-third full-time staff and a two-thirds part-time staff. So we are always struggling and we're always working around other people's schedules. And so that's, that's the delicate.
So are there people currently working part-time, like Tim Cooper or Douglas Bruce or whatever? Are some of these people going to be willing to work more hours because that rate's higher? Or is this an issue of some of these people aren't going to do, it doesn't matter what the rate is, I guess?
Something, yeah, yeah, something, somebody you could throw, you could throw ten times more onto that dollar amount and they're not going to work any, they're not going to work much more than what they have. This is also to move, to attract more people, like I said before.
So the idea is to get another six people on the list, for example?
Yes, you know, and so there is, in, in this list right here, in my six part-time paramedics that are in this list, I have, I think I laid it out in one of those emails that I sent, because I have like two that work relatively good amounts of hours every two weeks. I have two more that work a little bit, and then I have two more that I'm lucky if they, they stay within the parameters that we have, but I'm willing to work with one of them because he's one that I can kind of call at times and says, hey, had a call-up, had somebody sick, had some, you know, had a last minute cancellation. And, you know, they'll fill in, but their availability is limited. You know, I have one gentleman on the department who's somewhat retired. And there are times where he's picking up large amounts of, of time that, you know, we, the both of us have talked and he, you know, he's just one of those guys that doesn't want to say no, but I have others, I have a couple that have been referenced, that it is just small amounts. And so increasing the hourly rate will incentivize other people to say, hey, take another look at Culver here because the pay is up. And then adding a couple other bonus points to them also for holidays, that is, that makes it increasingly, um, well as it can be. So the answer is, you know.
Is there a reason for Scott versus Steven for both the full-timers, right, aside from you? Going from seventeen fifty to twenty for one and seventeen fifty to eighteen for the others? A reason those two are different is one more experienced or?
Uh, one is more, one more is more experienced and one is what I will kind of say my number two person. So they are, you know, when I'm gone or I'm away or, you know, something happens, that's the person that I can count on to take care of, know the day-to-day, know the operations to where they can function. The other one is just, is my trainer, um, that, uh, you know, I, I wanted to have, you know, some level of, there's responsibility for each individual. And so there are more added pressure. Scott is one that I count on that he, he picks up extra time because, you know, he just feels that, hey, I will do this if I'm, I'm full-time as well. And so, uh, we know that there's certain days that, uh, we can't get filled. He's a phone call away where, you know, the other one will do, but, you know, I, I put more pressure on Scott for a lot of other tasks as well within the department.
So I can tell the medics are all seventeen or at the eighteen based on experience and the EMTs are typically fourteen or fifteen based on experience. Uh, the one EMT who you moved to sixteen, is that because he's got more?
He has more responsibility. He takes care of the actual vehicles. He oversees that.
Okay.
So he, he talks with me on, on a monthly basis when we talk about meeting, we have a meeting and we talk about different things that are going on and things that need to be repaired. He also does minor, minor.
So he's kind of a strong part-timer?
Yes, he is a strong part-timer, so, uh, he does make sure that the fleet is running. He makes sure that we have the appropriate fluids and makes sure that when the vehicle needs to go for service, it's scheduled, it's, it's sent, that it's done, follows the records. We are, you know, we are changing the way we've done things, so now we are increasing more, uh, records and tracking of things. So unfortunately, that's why we have an increase of repairs is because.
Someone's paying attention.
Someone's paying attention and, and so, not that they weren't before, but it was just that we need to, we need to fix these things. And so, you know, that is our, that's our lifeline to get to all of you when you're needed. And we need to have the trucks up and running and maintaining, and so he has that added responsibility to make sure that, that is part of his assignments when he does come to work.
So I do have an idea to address Bill's concern. If we did take that overtime number that you and Karen come up with, if it's fifty-some thousand that we paid in overtime last year or for twenty-twenty, would it be reasonable for us to sort of look at it monthly, Karen? And the reports that you do on a monthly basis? Could we kind of, like, let's say we go ahead and agree to this, this twenty-two thousand dollar increase. Could we look at from like January, February, March? If the overtime average per month is going down to offset the twenty-two that's going to go up? So sort of like we've got this fifty-some thousand dollar overtime hit that we took this year and we're going to take a twenty-six, twenty-two thousand dollar hit on the increases, hoping that fifty at least decreases by twenty-two, right? Is it fair that we kind of go monthly and look at where are we at with overtime, Karen? Where are we at with salary?
No, I think that's, I think that's very fair if you want to, you know, you want to.
Cause I think that would probably make us more comfortable if we're monitoring how this works out. Cause I fully trust what you're getting at on, and I, I think it's ideal not to have that kind of overtime. And we do want to attract better EMTs, higher quality EMTs, and bottom line is money counts in that scenario. Uh, so I totally understand the case you're making. I just want to make sure we don't end up coming to the end of twenty-twenty-one with fifty-some thousand in overtime plus this twenty-two extra.
I see that a hundred percent.
Right.
And that's why I track it just as well as I know Karen does. I track that every pay period as I'm looking at how much, you know, how much overtime was there, how much of it was, was needed, how much of it.
Yeah, and to be fair, I think that's probably, we know we came out of last year with a lot of overtime on the police department because we didn't really have a lot of choice in that with COVID and hiring and replacing officers. So in a lot of ways, part of the, and Wayne was good about reporting, this is where we're at, this is what we're going to have to do. We even had some special meetings to say, okay, we're going to have to authorize this kind of overtime. So I think in some ways it could become part of the report that you give. And Wayne, I would almost expect with five officers to see how that's also transpiring over the year. Just, uh, I think that would sit better with us come budget time in June if we said, boy, they have been decreasing the overtime at the EMS. So these increases that we, we approved have worked out to our benefit financially.
Currently, if you're working thirty-eight hours each week, you've got.
Sixteen hours.
Sixteen hours of overtime go in, so are you expecting the number of, uh, part-time will pick up?
I'm sorry, Scott, I.
Look, the number of, uh, are you expecting this increase to cut that amount down to four hours where you can go to seventy-six, forty-eight?
And that, that, that is one area that I'm, I'm wanting to.
Otherwise.
Yeah, I, I, that's, that's one area that I'm trying to, to address to try to get that, because that's another cost savings for me as well. Is that the more I can get that down, those numbers down, it helps my bottom line just as much. And so it's definitely, um, not something that I'm not aware of, it's not, it's not on my radar to do is to, you know, the less overtime that we can pay, the better that we are. But there again, if our, if our, the way the policy is or the way that is, I would need some, I would think I'd probably need some language in the personnel policy for us to go the forty-eight, forty-eight to thirty-six, forty-eight or.
There isn't anything.
So if I, if I got the two, if I got the full-timers down to forty hours a week, you know, we can make any way, shape or form, that's perfectly fine with all of you.
I understand the whole, I guess, the whole rationale of not wanting to burn people out. Enjoy their holidays and their time off, but when I look at the salary spreadsheet here, I think this is for this year, basically twenty-five percent of Scott and Steven's salary over time. And so are, are they going to end up taking, you know, be a twenty-five percent reduction, but are they going to take a fifteen or twenty percent reduction to their pay comp rate? And is that, you know, is that a, a happy situation for them or what do they need? We're not, we're not, I go, we're not happy being all of them.
I know, and I know where you're going here, Rich. It's like, you know, that's, that's a big chunk of money that you're now taking out of their pocket that maybe they were used to or whatnot. You know, Scott and I have had conversations, have also had conversations with, with Steven there. Yes, there's a, there's a, there's a threshold, but there's a wiggle room, but what they don't like working is the large amounts of overtime there. Where Scott and, Scott had told me, hey, if you could get me working thirty-six, thirty-six, I'm happy with that. It's not, you know, there is going to be with you, bringing up that little bit of a dollar increments there, it's not going to, it's not going to be monumental and it's a paycheck there. But the problem that we're having is with them is the amount of hours per week that is, is, is starting to wear on some of those people that that's what's killing us even more of that. Yes, will there, will there maybe a week, month that may be higher because of something? Yes, I can't avoid some of this, you know, we're not out of COVID. We don't know about injuries. We have so many variables and so many unknowns that, um, it's hard to do this. Because what's different with our department than any other department is that it takes two people in that truck, uh, to run it and to operate it and to do our, do our business. And it also takes two people to be there always, you know, with an office spot or other positions within the town. If you, you don't have a person, you don't have a person, you know, then you can function without it. Where, where us, we're, we're forced no matter what. Now with the other, with the other salaries increasing, you know, there might be some other people, it might be some part timers that may have overtime, um, in a, in a pay period. We don't want to keep it consistent, but keep it to where it's still a lesser amount.
I definitely think you need to change that policy of minimum requirement of, is it a shift a month?
It's, it's.
It's insane.
It's a half a shift a month.
Yeah, and, and I think what you need to say is if we put that message to that part-time staff now, effective January first, you're going to be required to do four shifts a month or whatever it is that, you know, and you may lose some people. This is going to take a while for this to ramp up to a savings point because you're going to have to hire some people at some point, I'm guessing.
It's a risky move with these first two items because, you know, you have people that sit there go, well, I have a full-time job already, I'm working here part-time. And now you want me to, now you want me to pick up a holiday? And it's kind of like, hmm, God, uh, maybe it's not worth it here anymore. Because even though it's time and a half, you know, there are risks with all of this, even with increasing it. But also with bringing these wages up, bringing some of these other benefits into it. It allows us to track, attract a different tier of people, not second tier of people.
I mean, give them the positive with the negative. Like, hey, even though we're going to require you to do more shifts, we're going to pay you more. If that's what we're going to approve here. And they're either going to get on the train or not. I mean.
And that's, and then that.
And if we're not going to do the pay rate, then I need, we need to hear that, guys. Like, I get that you're looking at each other, but this is either a go or a not-go. Because he's got to do some communication regardless of what we decide. So that's going to have to occur quickly.
Would like to see that rate a little bit lower than what it is. Because one thing's for sure, if we agree this and it doesn't work next year, it's not like you can go back and go in a little favor. Once you do it, you're stuck with that pay rate. And, you know, if it works, then again, you have more people. Then I say, okay, if it works after one year, then, then, and we see the numbers going in line where your overtime is down and your, your part-time is working more, more days per month, you know, shifts per month. Then maybe afford to give him another, you know, another substantive pay raise rather than, you know, a three percent.
Jim, I have a question. And I guess this gets back to kind of fundamentals. But looking at your roster and, um, the EMTs and the medics. Now, do you, I mean, are these people saying to you that, no, we won't work for, um, sixteen twenty-five, I'm just picking some out of here. Are they saying they won't work for this wage? Or are you saying that basically you can't get people at this wage? Which is?
Two, one, I can't get people at the lower wages. Two, money will talk. Money will get people to pick up more shifts because it's, it's just inherent in the job.
But do these, I mean, are.
Are these people that we currently have, will they willing to keep the same pay? Were they willing to keep the same money? Yeah, they, they'll still do it, but I'm not going to get any more productivity out of them. And that's what I'm trying to do. I'm trying to get more.
Cause they can get more money picking up a shift somewhere else.
Yes, because we're, we're fighting it against their full-time job. So you work at a fully, you're working that, you know, ninety percent of our workforce is, or two-thirds of our workforce is part-time. So that's our time staff besides like one person, um, works in another job, works at a full-time job in another job. So as their rates are, like you see on here, closer even more, they can pick up overtime because they're full-time, they're working full-time hours. So they can pick up overtime shifts and make even more money than to come here and work for that wage at a straight time pay. So, um, at even a lesser rate than what they're, what they're making, um, at their other job. So when you increase this rate, it is a small, it is a big, it is a big increase when you look at it in some optics, but in others, it's not a big increase. It gets us, it gets us in a spot to where we're tracked, where we can do some more with it. It also puts us in a spot that we aren't overpaying for this, overpaying for the people as well. And then they'll look at it with some other things that we have here, lower carbine, lesser things, where they sit there and go, hey, I, I could just, I might as well just work there. I might as well pick up the hours there because they're, they're, they're consistent and not going to have to work as hard. But if they're making, you know, one and three quarters more per hour with their current salary at their full-time job or more than what they can make here, they're going to, they're going to pick up those hours. And that's what I have with some of those people. It's just like, I'm not going to do this because I have overtime at my other job. And I have that with a couple of my paramedics right now. I have that with a couple of EMTs is that there is a ton of overtime out there. COVID is causing some of it. Another of it is just, like I said in here, there are not enough personnel out there to do the job. And that's what's becoming increasingly harder to do.
Well, it seems to me though that if you had a look, if, if this roster were expanded by eight people, ten people, you solve the overtime problem, right?
Ten people will cost us another ten thousand dollars in, uh, put clothes on their back, get a uniform in there, get a little bit of training. There is an associated cost with having.
Well, that's going to be true with, with one.
It's going to be true with one, but you keep on adding, if, we have to have the threshold of part-time staff. We, we can't have, sit here and have twenty, thirty, forty people on the, with a part-time staff to meet our needs. Um, our workforce is unique and different than any other workforce out there in some ways. And so we can only, we can only get from a certain type of people. We can't just take it an EMT off, I just can't get anyone off the street to be an EMT. They have to be certified. Paramedic is the same way. And so.
Well, it's also, you're not going to attract eight or ten new ones if your hourly rates are twelve seventy-five and Stark County alone is paying fourteen.
But this is something.
They're going to go to Stark.
Something we fight every year.
Each of the people in the region, they've been increasing. Plymouth went up, Stark County went up. Uh, all of them have gone up in the last two years, significant raises. We just haven't followed in suit.
And going forward where we can control this is by monthly analysis. I was more in favor a few minutes ago of doing a quarterly analysis because I thought you'd have more of a trend. But I can definitely see when you said we got budgets coming in June, well, we only have two, two times to look at it. Well, like doing a monthly, we'll have six times looking at it. And we can track it in June, we can make some adjustments rather than looking at it once a year.
I also think out of fairness, the first couple of months, we're not going to see this major shift, I don't think. I mean, you may have some shift in covering a few more shifts because you've told the part timers, I'm going to expect you to work two or three shifts now instead of the one you've been working or get off my roster. So hopefully we'll see some shifts start occurring right away. But I think it's going to take a while to get there.
The schedule's already been, it's, it's already been out, right? I got it out, but it's, it's being built right now.
Four or five weeks ahead of time.
We're, we're doing a thirty day, basically almost a, um, by the time we're putting the, the next month out, we're getting ready to start doing the next one. I like to go to sixty, but, um, I don't think it's going to be possible to do a sixty a day output with the amount of part timers that we have.
But that at least gives you some time to tell the part timers. After this schedule, the next one, you're going to be expected so many shifts.
So what I was thinking and what I was going to propose is like with this monthly report, not a problem. I have no problem sharing and giving you this information that. Uh, but I would love to give it to you on the first meeting of the month for the prior month. So that way it's a true reflection of that. Because if we're talking the last meeting of the month, we may not be at the end of the payroll yet for that month. So if we're always going back one month, then you can monitor and actually have true numbers instead of looking at things in a certain way here. And so I'd be more than happy to write that monthly report, uh, and do that. And with going with that, I could, you know, like I said, we've got the schedule going right now. We could start it with, uh, the, the March, the March, uh, meeting. Because if January is going to be, the schedule's already going to be out, then we have February. And so then March would be the, the time. But then again, I can still share the information with you as it goes along. It doesn't mean that it's going to be perfect, but at least we're going to be trending the way I believe we're going to trend.
So could we, could we go line by line and possibly tweak a few of these? Where, so for example, I'm looking at just the medics. Some of them are currently at fifteen seventy-five, going to eighteen. But then we also have people from sixteen twenty-five going to eighteen. So what if we did some slight tweaks like Sally's suggesting? What if that fifteen seventy-five, Brandy Salida, whoever that is, goes to seventeen? And, uh, anyone at fifteen seventy-five, let's say goes to seventeen. And the sixteen twenty-fives go to eighteen, like you've got it. The ones going from twelve seventy-five to fourteen, that seems perfectly reasonable. That we not be lower than fourteen on anything. But what if we just did a few small tweaks? Your guy at twelve seventy-five going to sixteen, maybe he's fifteen. Cause that's still a decent raise for him. So we shave off just a little bit here and there, Jeff, like Sally suggested. Are you guys, if I survey the council, is that something we're open to? And then having Jeff do monthly reports on the OT and the coverage of the shifts that he's finding, were able to add to the roster or cover more of the holes with the part timers because they've been incentivized?
I'm with you except maybe the person in twelve seventy-five going to sixteen because of the additional duties at sixteen.
Keep it there.
Well, if you want fifteen fifty or something like that, but I'm just saying, it's still above the others. But, you know, you say the fifty cents.
A few tweaks here and there.
So what about this? What about maintenance, fifty cents more? Then the EMTs, uh, start at the fifteen and the medic start, all the medics start at seventeen. Is that fair and equal? Because the problem, the problem with going, like getting some of these names and some of these older people, some of them don't really work that much. And so there again, I like to reward some of the people that are, really want to put the time in. And those are some of the people that you were, you were mentioning. So it's, so if, if, if anything, I'd like to start them all off with the same.
Okay.
And then be able to.
That's, that's fine. I, I can go with that. And just basically, uh, maintenance guy fifty cents more. Then, uh, yeah, the maintenance, your maintenance goal would be fifteen, correct?
So then are you also going to add in that later when you start hiring people? They come in at a lower level and then come up? You've probably not gotten that yet, it's on your list.
Uh, if you want to talk about that right now, um.
I, I might be jumping the hole, so. No, that's a great, that's a great point for that part.
Pushing back and forth, Bill broke down, you know, a signing bonus. I think it's too early for any signing bonus until we get some trends built. You know, and see what he's able to attract and what he's able to do with these new rates. You know, maybe in the middle of the year, you can say, well, I'm not getting anywhere where I'm getting. So we might, and, um, we have some people drop off, so we might have to do a signing bonus. Not right now, I think, that, you put it on the table, but not today.
And to Karen's question about the, so would a basic EMT that you hired tomorrow, Jeff, come in at fourteen or fifteen?
Would start off at one dollar less.
Okay, and then after so many months.
Still trend after six months, then they would go up, uh, to that down.
If you're satisfied with their performance.
That's right.
Okay. And then the starting medic would come in at seventeen? Or sixteen?
Uh, no, starting would come in one dollar less, just as well.
Okay.
And then go to seventeen after the, after the six months.
Does that cover what you're asking, Karen? Yeah, it, it does. I just need to add that since I already made some adjustments to make the mental notes. So these that are currently, like John Grollick, we would bump him to seventeen. We'd bump Brandy to seventeen. We'd bump Kimberly Cooper to seventeen. All those eighteens would become seventeens.
Correct.
New medics would come in at sixteen. Okay, so that, that does help out with Sally's point and Bill's point. That twenty-two would go down slightly, um, to make this a little bit more comfortable. But at least it gets some decent rates out there to start the year off with.
And then you're trimming it monthly, so, you know, by March, we're going to have some decent results because we'll have some trends.
Or maybe by June, July, when we do budgets.
Be better, but what I'm saying, you can adjust as you go along.
Well, you'll, you'll, you'll be the ultimate judge of that. I mean, I'll be able to sit there and tell you, yeah, it's working or no, it's not working or it's, you know.
The numbers are going to tell it.
Yeah, the numbers are going to tell you. And so you'll be able to see, you know, a trend, yeah, trend's great, but you're going to be able to see the numbers through that point.
Okay, so those, those adjustments can be made on your chart. And then as the final topic that we haven't covered, full-time, hiring full-time. Now, here's my question, just because I know everyone wants to eat their arm off at this point and is hungry and ready to go. Is the hiring of a full-time medic, is that something we could consider at budget time instead? And see how this program rolls out? And if you still feel there's a need to cover those hours? Like if this doesn't work well, where you can actually fill some of these gaps with part timers, in my mind, it would make sense, you've got to look at a full-time, right? Uh, which is what we had to do when we used to be two full timers and we bumped it to three. Uh, we knew we could at least cover X number of shifts with that third person. Are you comfortable addressing this at budget time instead of now?
Well, the reason why I brought it up is because I feel that it's just as important now that it will be nine months, ten months from now. The problem is, is yes, will it add more money to the budget? Yes, it will cost an additional fee for the benefits. There's no way around it with, regardless of whether we hired one, two, three, four, whatever. But it's needed. It's needed for the reasons that I pointed out in here. It provides coverage in emergency staffing, uh, without staff overload. I mean, we are going to continue to have overload. We are going to continue for the entire time until we have a more stable workforce. Yes, part-time is great. It's a wonderful tool to have, but it's not an also, it's not, it's not the end-all solution to this whole thing. Is that we require two people to work. So having the other person will shore up and will get us away from the two-thirds part-time staff to more of a fifty-fifty and allow us to be able to maintain better coverage and maintain a more stable workforce if and when something drastic happens. Let's go back to the middle of the year when we only had a few police officers and the drastic steps that you had to do to make sure you had coverage. We're, we're no different with that same thing. We have a service that needs to provide people to be there. At the end of the day, we can, we can get, we can try to get part-time people. We can throw ten times the amount at them, not necessarily going to always do it, you know? But having that stable workforce, we can do other things with. We can mandatory, we can, you know, have them do other things and. We can mandatory, we can, you know, have them do other things and within our guidelines to make them work. Part-timer could just sit there and say tomorrow, yeah, I'm done, I'm over. You know, just as much as a full-time person can. But it just gives us more stability in the workforce. It reduces some things in the workforce. And it will actually help the budget overall because we're, we, we are able to, the hours that we've put to this person is, is figured in. So there's no variables outside.
We have to pay that medic no matter what. Because every shift has to have a medic, so we're, we're paying that wage no matter what. It's really the benefit package that we're adding on, right?
Correct.
Essentially.
You're not adding more dollars to the, the salaries. There might be a, a small fraction with, with overtime or just other things. But you're not adding like you are going to add to the, to the benefit section.
Right. Which is approximately thirty-some thousand? Karen?
For a family at the PPO plan.
Okay. Thoughts? I know this is a big one, but reactions, thoughts? I know this is the exact same problem Wayne was facing sometimes with the police department.
What do you think your chances are of getting a full-time?
Oh, you know. I have one that's willing to do it.
So you've got one on the books right now that's.
One on the books right.
Part-time that's willing to go full-time?
Willing to go full-time.
At, at the medic or EMT level?
At the medic level. I have EMTs that want to go full-time.
That doesn't really help either, right? Because you've got to have the medic whereas you don't.
They all help, they all help in one way or another.
Medic is important.
The medic is, just gives us the flexibility. Now, you might ask me, do we need a fifth medic? Go. Four would be the top that we'd ever need. But the, it ultimately helps and reduces risk. And that's what part of our job is as well, is that we try to reduce and prevent. And so with doing that, this shores us up. This gets us out of a gray area that can get worse at any one given time. And so it just, it protects the interests of the, of the, of the service and maintaining the service at levels if we do get into a bind or we do get into a problem.
Question, where would the extra thirty-some thousand come from?
Out of the general fund that, money that we have.
Because we'd have to appropriate at this stage, right?
We have to do an additional appropriation right now. We're looking at a ten thousand dollar buffer. That's it for next. At, estimated, I mean, hopefully it's more, but I don't know that it's going to be forty thousand or thirty thousand, forty thousand dollars.
Right.
So we're going to be, you know, overspending.
Are you about to lose a medic? What's the one that's good at law school?
Um, middle to late of next year. COVID is pending, slow the process.
Uh, I just was curious.
But I do, there, even though I say I have one that does it, I do have a couple. And it will go out to an internal inter, uh, process first. And I will do interviews on that spot and then recommend to Jonathan to pass along to you and to approve it once it's been decided upon. But it will be open up to all the part-time staff or all the part-time medics that are there.
If you had a full-timer, Jeff, would we need to adjust these rates at all? Because I guess my question is, benefits would cost about thirty-some thousand. Or we increase the rates, which costs twenty-some thousand. If we had, if we added a full-timer, I get, we, we still want to cover some shifts with part-time people, obviously. But if we add that full-timer, do we need to make this strong an adjustment on the rates?
Yes. They're, they're both, they're both needed. They're not, they're not the same. And the same thing with that full-time medic starting, they are going to start at the lower rate as well. So they will follow the same principle, just like I laid out in that plan as well. Granted, it's not a big cost savings. But, you know, it's going to still follow the same format.
Marlene, your budget's already been approved too. So if, if a twenty-twenty-two, we were looking at having a fourth full-timer, do you think that additional cost is something we can take on? Assume, but, and I'm just putting out this worst-case scenario is we don't save off the overtime and we add the expense of a fourth medic. Worst-case scenario. We think the scenario will improve on the overtime side of it. But can we afford to, I guess that's my question to the council, can we afford to add this benefits package? We're going to pay the wage no matter what to a medic because we got to cover those hours with the medic anyway. So I, I don't have any issue with the fact that might as well make him a full-time medic if we can afford to pay the benefit package. Do we think we can do that between our two budgets?
I think we're going to have to. You know, I, I don't see any way that, and, and these, these rates that he has come up with as a person that's retired and working part-time, these rates are not too high.
I agree.
Not at all, you know.
When Walmart's advertising a starting rate of eleven.
And I make more than this and I'm not an EMT.
And look at other departments within the town. I mean, I didn't address that at all on this meeting. Is that there are other departments in this town that are making more as a starting wage than, than these, some of these medics that, you know, it took two years for them to get that license. You know, there, there is training and effort and we require, and we require none of that. We put no money into them other than a uniform and a little bit of orientation. Everything else they provide to us. Paramedic comes here with a license, ready to go. EMT does the same. And so that, you know.
Yeah, I don't look at any.
That's the hard part for me.
Fifteen dollars an hour is not a lot of money for any job, let alone someone who has to get educated to do their job.
Yeah. Paying no benefits.
The fact that this person could save a life and gets paid that just blows my mind.
I don't see a problem with that at all. The full-time person, we're going to have to do it eventually.
It does seem like it guarantees you cover X number of shifts no matter what when you have that full-timer.
Yeah, you know, like you just thought, worst-case scenario, worst-case scenario. You know, we'd be dropping staffing, you know, other things happening. You have two days' cover between the four of us. Whereas right now, you don't, you don't, you have a day and a half and then I got to pull someone back again to work the back half. And so it's just a vicious cycle. And then on top of all that, the, the added cycle of overtime, you know, it's, overtime is going to eat us. Overtime is going to eat us every year. I'm not going to sit there and say that, you know, overtime isn't, you know, going to be solved or anything like that. But we can make steps to mitigate it and reduce it and keep it within a, within a relative acceptance to where it's.
If we spent fifty-some thousand on overtime, that covers the benefits package.
And then you have to look at other, you know, like you said also, you know, we have the revenue offset. You know, this year is going to be a higher year of revenue than we took in this year. Next year, I project even a bigger, higher revenue intake. So, you know, those revenue offsets, you know, help both interest party, township and town. It brings back, it helps you in your bottom line, so it reduces our overall cost. So, you know, I can't sit there and say that we're, we're never going to be in the black. We will always be in the red. That's just the nature of the business. That's with public safety as a whole. It's a necessary need.
I do think we need to readdress the conversation with the academies on emergency services in general. We need to see an increase in revenue there. It can't just be random. We need a contract with them. That should be number one goal for us with the academies next year. Which I think will have some impact on all the services. I mean, because when Jonathan ran these numbers a while back, I think our biggest cost was EMS. Second biggest was police and third fire as far as us servicing the academies. It seems like, you know, yes, they, they footed part of the bill for the, the fire truck, but we've never seen that with an ambulance or our budget. Some years, they give us this random amount of money, other years, it's nothing. That should also be accounted for, I think, in this whole scenario. So I'm just going to quickly survey the five of you. If Jeff tweaks these rates a little bit, are you comfortable with the presentation of these numbers? And we're all comfortable already with the holiday stuff. But I also want to gauge, are you comfortable with authorizing Jeff to hire another full-time person in twenty-twenty-one? Start with you, Sally.
Uh, yeah, I think so.
Okay.
I, quite frankly, I really don't see the choice. And there's an advantage to having full-time. Would you agree?
Yeah, Rich.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think that it makes sense. It will help. There are no additional hours involved and it's a benefit cost. And hopefully we'll be good so on the overtime that is building, so yes.
Bill Giffen?
I'm in favor and I just want to add to what Jeff's saying. You know, revenues are starting to increase and it'll be the first time in how many years revenues have increased? And, you know, the objection goes forward like that, it'll help us.
Okay. Bill Clevinger?
If Marlene says what she means what she said. I know that she did. I'll go along with it.
Yeah, you just did.
I'm going along with Marlene.
Okay.
I'll be there which way that is.
And Marlene, it sounded like you were good.
I, I think so. And like I said, I, I don't have a problem with these rates. Uh, you know, the benefit package and, and with the town employees now, maybe you're going to be upset. But, you know, the benefit package may have to be addressed at one point. You know, the days of paying for everything.
We keep talking about that every year.
I know.
It's, it's a coming.
It may not, you know, it may not be there. And, and as a person that works for the government and, you know, I love that benefit package. You know, it's going to be hard, but, uh, but the benefit package just keeps going up every year. And that may be the part that we may have to take a hard look at, you know. The wages, I don't have a problem with at all.
Okay. Clerk? Do you have some?
I don't have a problem right now.
Okay. I like that answer. Jonathan?
Yeah, I mean, the only thing I think I said to Jeff was, um, there's a lot of stuff on here with the three different things. I would, I would have liked to see us try the first two and readdress in a couple of months. But, I mean, like, all the conversation here today, I mean, I, I don't disagree with any of it.
Okay.
Um, the only thing, I think, as far as benefits, I think.
We have a committee kind of looking at.
Yeah, and there, there are a couple of real easy things that maybe we could consider before, if you move forward with this, even looking at like, I think one thing Karen and I were just talking about the other day was like the packages that we offer existing employees versus new employees. So like, we offer four different options now. Two. What am I thinking, four? Oh, I'm thinking of single and married and all that stuff. But there's, yeah, just the, so do we offer, and I know that committee's not ready yet. But I, I guess one easy one would be just reducing that down to the cheaper option of the two that we offer, which is the health savings plan, which is still, I think, a pretty good plan, but it's, you know, less expensive. There's one other thing. Oh, no, that's a, one.
When you think less expensive, I remember Karen bringing up the number at one point, the difference between the two plans. Was it, was it a few thousand per employee saved?
I've got the numbers in writing here.
And again, I, that's just one thing I thought about as far as, you know, there would be a way of phasing it is allowing people on the existing, if you've had it and you've been here a while, you know, and you've had a certain plan, continuing to offer it. But as new people come on board, only offering the less expensive of the two, that would be a simple thing. I know we want to look at the employee contribution. Employee contribution is probably the other big thing, but I don't think we'll have that figured out tomorrow or anything like that. I know.
At least what, before there's an open enrollment period or?
Opening enrollment's done and finished.
Yeah.
Okay. So. So if you're looking at a family plan on the HSA, it's twenty-six thousand nine hundred, basically. And that includes three thousand dollars contribution to an HSA savings account that we've already set up. If it's the PPO plan, that one's thirty thousand six fifty-four. Or simply around four grand difference. Times how many employees? That would, that would add up, I guess.
Sure does make our conversation at Boys and Girls Club a little different than it, Bill.
Yeah, it sure does.
We had a council, or a member of our board who thought the six thousand four hundred dollars, was it? For covering full-time insurance for our director and her family was too much. And I said, uh, the town would love to pay six thousand four hundred per twenty.
Well, that's when we were paying eleven thousand together.
Yes. And they thought eleven thousand was just unfathomable.
And remember, that conversation was close to eight years ago. If, if you're seeing the other group for the town.
No, for Northwest Indiana, you used to pay the insurance for the director.
We were comparing the tax, saying that the town's rate was eleven thousand.
No, no.
Oh, no.
That's.
No, that's what we, everything we were.
They thought, they thought, they thought eleven was just beyond crazy that Northwest was paying that for her. We signed her up through, what, what's the Obamacare thing called, whatever?
Obamacare.
Um, for the full family, it was like six thousand something. And we actually had a board member who just freaked out about that. I was like, are you kidding me? We'd give anything if that were our cost for our town employees, but twenty-six thousand is more like it, or thirty thousand. So, okay. Well, Jeff, I think you got, I surveyed everybody, you know where they stand. That's probably good news for you. Probably sleep a little better over the holidays.
I'm very thankful to all of you here. I know that, you know, this is a, this is a big push, this is a big jump. But I, I truly feel that it's, it's needed and it's going to make things a lot better to work with and it's going to stabilize some areas that need to be stabilized.
I think it's going to cause a little bit of work on the appropriation side of things, I imagine, for Karen. Um, so be awfully nice to Karen in the next few months.
Okay, brought me chocolate yesterday.
Oh, there you go.
Speaking of which, she's going in this bag right now.
Hey.
Oh, he's getting it.
That would go a long way for her. Oh, my gosh, she did not. Did you seriously?
Hey, Karen already gathered.
Was he going to go there if we said no? It's the brand, Rich.
He was going to keep that.
It's the brand. He invested in this.
Yes. That was his overtime paper this week.
I would shop local as well.
I do agree with your comment though about, uh, not only the academy, but we need to talk to Black Sky County. We need to talk to North Bend Township. Any of those, any of those people that we provide services for. We need to, we need to contact them every year to make sure that we have a contract, whether it's a one-year contract or a four-year contract, whatever. But we have to know how much we're going to get from those people.
Do you guys think that with the holidays coming, we could have that sometime early in the first of the year?
Right, and Jimmy, I think.
Your proposals for what that contract should be, Wayne's input on that as well as police, because we are servicing that, that school and not Palaski so much, but, um, what, what we should be charging Culver Academies on an annual basis to cover emergency services to Culver Academies. And then separately, if we need to go up on Palaski, et cetera, those other contracts.
The Palaski one, Jeff and I, we've talked about that one. I think it's through all of next year, right? So it would be the following year. But this, this budget year, we talked about making sure we get in front of them again when.
So really, it's just the academies one we need to figure out now. But the, the goal being that Jonathan. But the, the goal being that Jonathan and I can approach them with, our costs have gone up significantly in the last few years for all the right reasons. You know, we're now a paramedic-level service, we're now four full-time people versus two from years ago. And we need to know what our revenues are, we need to stabilize our revenues. And we need to know what Culver Academies is going to be contributing. And this is what we think it costs to service you. You can either sign a contract with us or you can go hire someone else to provide the service. That's what I want to be able to do.
Jenny, I would recommend that, in difference from what we did in the past, or just, you know, two or three, whatever, I'd make this time that Jeff should go with you and Marlene should go with you. And, and so the four of you, including Jonathan, he, those four go over there and sit down.
Well, it's technically Wayne and the fire department is what...
Marlene particularly, you know, as kid in the game and, you know, we, there's sort of...
Yeah, I think the three of us could approach it. I don't want to involve the supervisors directly because I think it's unfair to get put on the spot. And they have to have a good working relationship when they're servicing. I think we just need to be the hardball political players that go and say, this is what it... This is what it cost us and we want a contract. And if you don't want to work with the town, have someone else provide the service. I think it'd be foolish if they said, well, go to Plymouth, okay. Take 20 minutes to get an ambulance here or half an hour, I don't care. But the bottom line is, we, we have never been able to count on that money. I don't even know if they've contributed this year. Did we ever get a check? So there've been years we get it and years we don't. We, we never know if they're going to contribute on equipment. You know, we just need to figure it out.
Well, and the contract has to be on the services itself. If they want to contribute to the equipment that we buy, that's wonderful and we'll approach them with that. But we have to have a separate contract so that we know exactly how much we're going to get every year for the services.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're saying equipment is above and beyond.
Right. And if they, if they donate to a fire crew, that's wonderful, but that doesn't make them contracted for the service area.
Yeah, and it can't be a handshake or a random council member shaking Tom Post's hand or whoever's in his place at this point. It's got to be a contract.
Play the property tax.
We just, I mean, we, we, we know what our revenue is on the billing end in general. We have an average of what we collect in billing. We know what part Marlene's covering on average every year, like... But it's between Marlene's money and Jeff's revenue on billings and our money. There's not enough to cover it, there's not enough revenue coming in. And I'm not saying the academy has to make up that gap, but, you know, we are servicing them for free, basically.
They need to have them in the game.
Right, and it just needs to be a legit number that has data behind it. All right, anything else, Ben?
Well, I just have one question.
Take our chocolate, Ron.
I'm clearly a devil's advocate though, because I asked Marlene. I think it's great if we can get a contract. I'm not against it at all, but I'm just thinking, from their point of view, they're going to come back, they may come back and say, well, what are all the property taxes we pay?
Does, they, so what?
But they don't pay any more property taxes than what you and I do for the houses that they have, for the other things that they have. The only thing that they don't have to pay taxes on is the, the school buildings themselves and those things. The state, state says that they get 50 acres of property that they don't have to pay taxes for. The academy is not getting 200 acres of taxes or of taxes in property. But they still have to pay on their, on their houses that they, the teachers living in. I mean, they don't pay on the president's house.
Bill, but that's what I'm saying, but is that, is that...
Well, Bill, Bill, only 40% of their people even live in town. And we still have to service that campus.
Right, right. So we still, yeah, for, for, for property that we're not getting taxes on, so.
Yes.
So they're already getting 50 acres.
They're not, they're not in our boundaries and yet we're servicing them. It'd be like if we're servicing Monterey, we'd be charging Monterey.
But it's only, it's only in the township, so it is on our, in our service area.
They don't pay taxes to Marlene though for that campus.
But you said it's part of our service area. They, it's either Marshall's family.
Well, yeah, we, we choose to make them part of our service area, but they're not, they're not paying into her pool of money that pays us. They don't get taxed on any of those buildings.
I think what you're trying to get at is, they're, they're no different than anyone else in the, in the tax space when it comes to resident property tax. It's their increased calls for service, increasing needs that normal people are not having to deal with. Case in point, the aerial truck. Wasn't here in the, in the beginning phases of that, but I'm sure that was one consideration with the academy because of the buildings and because of the type of structures that they need to have. So there again, that's an increased stress on the economy. Home buying is the next thing. So when you were constantly calling out and have service to a, to a particular location, it's taxing that to where it takes away from the other needs that normally would function just fine within.
Yeah, and I, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, you don't get tax money off those buildings, right?
Not the campus.
So, because I used, I used to think that was the case and so I never cared that we didn't have an agreement because I thought, oh, they pay taxes to Marlene and she gives us money. And then I learned that's not really the case. So we don't technically collect from them unless they can hand us a check.
I'm not arguing that point, I'm just saying they're within our service areas, just like the churches.
Because of being in the township.
Just like the churches. We're not going to not go to a church because we don't pay property taxes.
Yeah, that makes sense, yeah. Whereas Plaski is not and we contract with them.
And that's how we know.
Yeah. Yeah, I think if they even had a contract with Marlene where they were paying her to pay for that service and she turned around and handed us the money, it would make more sense than it does to not have anything come. Just because they sit in a township. Okay, enjoy your chocolate, everyone, thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
See you.